Okay, we got it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the West Orange Planning Board Special Meeting, April 26, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township West Side Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Leisure. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start at 10:30 PM. May I ask you all to rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, the next Planning Board regular meeting will be held May 3, 2023 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Yamalet, the roll call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Council President Williams?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Here.
Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Chairman Baghoff?
Here. Thank you.
I'm just for the record, Mr. Cordosa won't be joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Cordosa and Mr. Morgan for the record are not going to be here tonight. Thank you. So, we have two resolutions to vote memorialize. The first is PB 23-03 Francis Burn Golf Course Draft Resolution. I make a motion, we approve PB 23-03 Francis Burn Golf Course Draft Resolutions. Were there, were there conditions associated with this, Diana?
Yes, there were. If we could scroll down to the bottom.
More, no, up a little more.
There was just the there was only the one, I think they had to submit the condition, the permits that they needed. It's just the one after further resolved it, one more, one more page up, yeah. We'll submit a list of use permits for the prop, to the project township engineer.
Great. With the conditions as stated, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Guarino, seconds. Yamalet on the motion.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Baghoff?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next is PB 22-14 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue, the draft resolution. I make a motion that we approve this. With condition, other conditions on this one?
Yeah, there are. This is the one, this was at the, at the, with the gym or the workout room and the office on the bottom, there were several conditions.
And, and placing the
The dumpsters, confirming the placement of the dumpster enclosure.
Two dumpsters, with convictions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smiraldo, seconds. The, Yamalet on the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Oh, no, Mr. The Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Baghoff?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Diana, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Sure, let's see, who do we have? We have
Barry?
Mr. Barry, and then I thought I saw another.
Yes, hi, Kate Keller, yes.
Okay, so, Ms. Keller, would you put your name and spell your last name, and also we'll do the same for Mr. Barry, so we have your names on the record. And then please raise your right hand, do you swear, swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. And Kate Keller, last name is K E L L E R, professional planner from Phillips Price, Greigle.
Mr. Barry?
I, I too swear to, and that's Dave Barry, last name B A R R Y with CME Associates, a board professional for West Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an application, PB 23-02 Dogwood Green LLC, 5 Central, 11th Block 10, Lot Number, Lot 1.01, Zone I, Industrial Zone. This is a continuation from the previous meeting of this application. It was, it was properly noticed at the previous meeting, and for the applicant?
Is Richard Skolnick?
Skolnick.
Yes.
You're up, sir.
Thank you, we appreciate the special hearing. As you mentioned, we were here two weeks ago on April 12, just to orient the board. On April 12, we had testimony from our architect, Ron Elkins, and we had testimony from Danielle Greto, the principal. There were two significant concerns expressed by the board, so I wanted to touch on those. First, one had to do with the signage. The board requested that we remove the word cannabis, and also the marijuana leaf were agreeable to that. I'm gonna put our planner back on to show you some revised signage. The board expressed concerns about the pickup window, and we're removing that from the application. So, although there were a host of more technical issues, those seem to be the two main concerns, I wanted to clarify those right up front. Signage will remove the word cannabis and the marijuana leaf, and will eliminate the pickup window. Tonight, Chairman, I'm gonna recall the architect, gonna have him talk a little bit about the signage. He's gonna touch on the statutory criteria as well in his capacity as an architect. I hope you'll give us a little latitude, given the relatively minor nature of the variances. We do not have a planner. Then we have our security expert, Kevin Craig. There was testimony two weeks ago about the security cameras. He'll talk a little bit more about the various features, including how we check for IDs, the security cameras and so on. And if I may, Chairman, just to again reorient the board, in terms of the relief that we're seeking, the relief, we have a conditional use approval request, and we have confirmation from the board's planner that we satisfy all of those conditions. I don't think there's any issue related to that, so we're gonna be seeking the conditional use approval. Where are, we are seeking minor site plan approval, minor site plan approval, and no variances other than the one de minimis variance for lot coverage for about 112 square feet for the generator pad and the, and the trash enclosure. So, a minor site plan approval with one minor variance, and then some relief related to the signage. So, overall, the request is fairly narrow. So, with that, Chairman, I of course have my client here, Danielle Greto, if you have more questions. We have a couple of minutes of testimony from the architect, and a couple of minutes from the security expert.
You're up, sir.
Okay, we're gonna recall Mr. Elkins.
Mr. Elkins, you're still under oath.
Certainly.
Thank you. Don't do that, Mr. McGovern.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, Mr. Elkins, you're still under oath, and he agreed?
Yes.
Yes.
And
and you you wired him last time, and the board recalls.
We appreciate that. I'm just realizing, I don't have my notes on what the next exhibit is handy, I have it somewhere. But we'll make something up and
Wait a minute, let me see, I have it.
Okay, thank you. My apologies.
That's okay, Mr. Skolnick.
AD1 was photos of conditions, existing conditions.
I think that's all we marked.
I think that was all you marked.
Okay. Okay.
AD2? Yeah.
So, we're good, A2, Ron, as the chairman mentioned, you understand you're still under oath from two weeks ago?
I do.
Okay, and you didn't lose any of your licenses or anything in the last two weeks?
Still in good standing.
Okay, can you call up the revised signage?
Certainly, let me pull that all right, and I will share that now. So, as you can see on the screen, basically, the, the main differences, as Mr. Skolnick expressed, the facade on the west side of the building, instead of the word, the words cannabis dispensary, the word cannabis has been removed, as well as on the face of the building, the oval shaped sign, also the word cannabis has been removed. And the small projecting sign has been removed, the marijuana leaf graphic has been removed to just have the DWG standing for Dogwood Green, and the word dispensary has been added.
Okay, and we're gonna call this A2 Revised Signage Rendering. And just to reconfirm, we're removing the term cannabis, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're removing the marijuana bud or leaf, as it may be called.
Exactly.
Okay, and I know you're an architect and you're not licensed as a planner, but can you just talk about the signage in terms of, from an architectural standpoint, how there may be some benefits to the public, and whether you see any detriments from an architectural standpoint?
Certainly, as we, as we all know, the site is in an industrial zone, which has very minimal signage allowed. I, I'm reading between the lines that the purpose of the industrial zone is basically manufacturing, industrial, very little customer exposure to these buildings, which granted signage would be, you know, if you're an employee of a building, you know where you're going, you don't necessarily need to advertise to the public where you are. Although retail is allowed in an industrial zone, and cannabis is just a subset of that retail with the conditional use. We are applying for signage similar to a retail, a retail zone, swapping out or replacing the, the signage on the south, which is the front facade, as well as replacing the existing projecting sign at the corner, and the addition of the, the new sign on the west side as we, as we see here. The main purpose of that is to basically identify the building to the public, not so much as an advertisement for the building, but just more as wayfinding. We were concerned that if the building were, had been reduced back to the signage requirements for the industrial zone allowances, that it might cause blocking of traffic on the street as people are driving and, you know, looking around, trying to figure out where they are. So, the replacement of the two signs, the pylon or the protect, projecting sign at the corner, the wall mounted sign on the facade, as well as the, the additional lettering signage on the west facade, we feel is actually beneficial of the building, beneficial of the neighborhood, beneficial to the customers to identify where the building is, and minimize the back of, of potential traffic.
Okay, so, so, at least some marginal safety benefits to the public, and having a reasonable identification of a retail facility in an industrial zone.
Exactly, and the building has, in its history, in its previous use as a bank, had been granted special approval for the signage that was already in place now.
Okay, and from, at least from an architectural or design standpoint, do you, do you see any detriments to the community broadly speaking, given this signage?
I don't think so, and I, and I think it's probably more similar to the buildings to the east or to the west, I'm sorry, to the left of this, this image here in the front. Most of us may recall that there is a, a small shopping center building with a parking lot and multiple retail customers, which happens to be not in the industrial zone, the edge of the industrial zone is the western edge of this property. But, but there's numerous signage for all the retail tenants in that building. So, it's, it's similar to that, although much smaller in scale, as far as the signage is concerned.
Chairman, that concludes our testimony tonight with Mr. Elkins. Now, there were a number of what I'll call technical issues in terms of the parking lot, striping and all that, which we had agreed to. We don't have any issues with the review letters, if you'd like, you can do a little broad recap of, of what we had gone through. But we don't think there's any material open issues in terms of the site details.
Why don't you, why don't you finish up with your, a security expert, and then we can go to the, the overall review of everything with Ms. McGovern and what we did last time, does that make sense?
Could, can I just ask one question about the size of the signs that are going to be there, the dimensions?
Mr. Skolnick? Yes.
Yes, of course, Ron, can you provide the dimensions?
Yes, I can, I think that's in a different image, let me pull that up.
You're changing the squares, the rectangle sign in the front of the building to an oval, and you're adding the new larger sign on the roof line? And you're adding this small projection sign that says DWG?
Exactly.
So, that's only three signs, I thought that the variance was for, for two additional, two existing and two additional.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, how many signs you have?
Oh, sorry, I thought I was sharing my screen, it looks like I am not. Here we are, okay. I was pointing away and realizing that no one else could see it but me. So, the, the signage in the front basically is a three by seven, or, you know, almost three foot by eight foot, similar in scale to the, the large rectangle that's there, although since it's oval in shape, it's, it's rounding out the corners, so it's less square footage there. So, that's a replacement of the existing sign. The round sign, let me find a better image of that. So, this round sign over here is basically a replacement of the rectangular sign that's, that's there in place now. The overall size of the sign is, or the diameter of the circle is similar to the width of the rectangle. Although again, since it's round, it's smaller in square footage.
And Ron, what sheet are you referring to on your?
This is A200.
Okay, and what's the date on that?
That is the 3/27 of 23.
Okay, so that's
Revision number one, the planning revisions.
Okay, so that's, so far, we have two signs, and they're both replacements.
Exactly.
Okay, we noticed for, at some point, there were four, what, what, what do we have in addition?
In addition, we do have very small identification, just basically vehicular identification signs, you know, do not enter on the exit path for vehicles, and then a, an enter here sign.
So, those are more, those are more safety signs.
Yeah, that's, that's not what the variance is for, though, the
The variance is for advertising signs, I don't believe this is for safety signs.
So, the only new advertising sign that is proposed is, is this one here above the
Okay. What side of the building is that, the west side? No?
That's the west side.
West side.
And that's the one that faces the, the 7-Eleven and the, the shopping center on the corner.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. On the east side of the building, is there any wall space there for a sign? So, people heading west?
There is, let me pull up a, a Google Street View image of what that looks like now.
But wouldn't the, those people see the, the round sign sticking out from the side of the building? That was the cannabis leaf, now it says DWG Dispensary?
Hmm, I think it's gonna be hard to see with that tree right there, and I don't want them to take down the tree.
Sure. Agreed.
So, this is currently what that, that looks like, this is the rectangular sign I was, I was mentioning before.
So, you can see it as you're coming down.
Yeah.
And this tree, I think, since it is touching the building, might need to be, you know, pruned.
Maybe trimmed a little bit.
Okay, and so, can we go back to the one on the west side, is, we were looking for the dimensions?
The dimensions on that are approximately 14 feet by two feet.
So, actually, you only have three advertising signs, not four, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yes, if I, if I may, Ms. McGovern, I'm just looking at our report and looking at the plans. If, if, if you could scroll over, I think, I believe the fourth sign was intended as this circular sign on the pickup win, on, on what, what was the existing pickup point.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's, that's what pop up, but that's what we caught as the fourth sign.
I see, and that'll be, that'll be omitted, that'll just be a, an opaque white film on the, on the window. So, these are the same drawings that were submitted previously.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, but that's what I have as well, so, yes, so it's for the, it's, it's two existing, replacement of two existing sides and one new sign.
So, the two existing signs are pre-existing, non-conforming, and you really need one new sign?
Yes.
On the roof line, okay.
Well, actually, it's only one new one that is non-conform, the, the other one that says existing required, I thought that the two signs were permitted, no wall signs are not permitted at all in the, okay, I get it. Two pre-existing that were granted
Right.
Before, and then the one new one.
Yes.
Exactly.
Agreed. Okay. Okay, I think we got, Mr. Elkins, we have the signs down now?
Can I just ask some question to clarify?
The, who's speaking, Mr. Barry?
The Jensen.
Mr. Jensen, go right ahead.
The, the signs are just gonna say dispensary, not cannabis, just dispensary?
That's correct.
Along with the, the name of the, of the dispensary, so it'll, it will say Dogwood Green Dispensary. But, but you're right, then the name or the word cannabis and the, the marijuana leaf graphic have, have both been removed.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
These signs are not going to be lighted, is that correct?
It was proposed that they would be illuminated internally.
Which one, all or one?
All, all three.
All three illuminated? Will they go off at a certain hour or be illuminated 24 hours a day?
We would have those on a timer, so they would be off during evening hours.
Okay.
Mr. Jensen again, how will they be illuminated, will they be backlit or?
They'll be, they'll be internally illuminated, so the, the face of the lettering and the face of like these, these white, the white panels. Well, this, this diagram here on the right shows kind of a, a diagrammatic section, but basically there are LED diodes that are behind this, this white, let's just say white plexiglass, it's an opaque, and an opaque plastic, and they'll, it'll basically glow evenly from edge to edge.
They're backlit.
Right, yeah, they're, they're backlit, yeah, there won't be a light, you know, directly on the face, you know, shining on the face of the lights.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do we wanna put a time on it, or?
Well, that's my
Close, oh.
Is it going to be there, what, is it going to be lit when the business is open and off when it's closed, or it's gonna be lit up to a certain time at night?
Um, that's something we haven't discussed in detail, Ms. Greto may be able to speak to that in more detail, but, but I would say during most of the time of the operating hours, it'll be, you know, during daylight hours, they might not, they won't necessarily need to be illuminated. We can save electricity that way. So, I would say, depending on the season, that it may be open during the, the evening side of the operating hours.
Ms. Keller, do we have in our ordinance, like, such as from dusk till 11 o'clock, dusk till 9 o'clock?
Half hour past closing, at closing, that kind of
Yeah, could we put something in a little more positive as far as when the signs are gonna be lit?
Yes, let me, I can take a quick look at that, but
We don't wanna be restrictive to the business, but also there are people living in the community.
No signs shall be illuminated between 10 PM and 7 AM, unless this, the business is open later than 10.
Mr. Skolnick, is that acceptable to the applicant?
That's acceptable.
Outstanding.
Hello.
Great.
Thank you.
I gotta note, I don't know if our, our neighbors at seven, at the 7-Eleven are being enforced, but we'll agree to it.
Thank you.
Well, if they're open later than 10, their sign can also be open later at 10, so.
Well, we, well, we can't, we can't be open past, I think it's seven or eight, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do any of the members of the board have any questions about the signage or any of the testimony from the architect, Mr. Elkins? Do any of the members of the board have any questions?
I do, Dr. Baghoff.
Ms. Al, Ms. Alpert?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm curious, with the drive up windows no longer being part of the application, if there is any consideration to possibly removing them, both for aesthetic driver confusion and maybe even security reasons?
Well, it's been testified that it's bulletproof glass, so I don't know that it'll be easy access, I, I'd leave that to the architect and the applicant. I, I'm sure they could put up something that says, go through the front door. I think it would be a great expense to take them out of the building and seal it up, that I, I don't know that that would make sense for us to condition that. Because we don't know what the future will bring. So, I would say there's gotta be some type of decorative insulation on the inside of the glass. And, and I would leave that to smarter minds than mine. Mr. Barry, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, I, I would have to defer to the applicant's architect. And, and what you had said earlier is, is very pertinent to this as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Council President Williams?
Yes, thank you, I had the same concerns that Mr. Alpert, a board member just presented. However, I am in recollection that this is, and correct me if I am wrong, but this is not a purchase, they do not own the building. This is a lease application. So, with that being the case, I recall there being some concern about the front of the building as well, and them indicating that they did not have the purview to do that, because again, they do not have ownership of the building, so that I would personally perceive that as an undue hardship, because there is no ownership in, in the actual premises, this is a rental application. Therefore, I am comfortable with closure, sealing, no access being provided to the public, and that being satisfactory as far as any additional conditions being applied by the board. However, what I am concerned about and what I want confidence in is that since we have not approved any additional signage in the windows, and the applicant has not asked for any, that it simply be some type of opaque covering, and that in the event any type of signage be allowed in those windows, even if it says something as simple as no access or whatever have you, that that be presented to us now, and a condition that can, if it is to be changed, it must come back before this board for approval.
I, I would say the condition Council President should be that if it needs a variance, it would come back for the board, otherwise it could go to the zoning official to see if, if it fills the requirements of the ordinance, would that make sense?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. McGovern, we can note that?
Yeah, so, I'm just wanna follow, so the drive-through window will be opaque?
Windows, windows.
Windows will be opaque?
Let's leave, let's leave that up to the applicant, they wanna put a, a scene of a, of a garden or a sheep or a cow, or whatever they choose. Again, bring it, that will go to the, to the Director of Planning. And the Director of Planning will say, oh, that's, that fits within the neighborhood. How's that? Mr. Skolnick, does that make sense?
That's reasonable, we appreciate that, we appreciate the board's concern, it's a very expensive proposition overall, and
Absolutely.
That would be an enormous expense. That would be an enormous expense.
Okay, so the the windows will be designed so so it's made clear to the public that they are not in use.
Correct. Okay.
Yep.
Do any of the members of the board have any questions for Mr. Elkins, the architect, about his testimony last week or testimony this evening about the signage?
Can I ask, Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, the the drive up window is, I I know they took it out of this application. Is it something that's going to be revisited another time?
Don't know. Up to the applicant. Up to the applicant and the law.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do any of the members of the board have any questions from Mr. Elkins, the architect, about his testimony last week or testimony this evening? Seeing none. I'm going to open this up to the public at this moment. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Elkins, the architect, about his testimony last week or testimony this evening? Please raise your hand to be identified.
Hey, Ron, can you take down the exhibit, please? There we go. Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Elkins, the architect, about his testimony last week or this evening?
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Do any members of the public have any comments about the testimony of Mr. Elkins, the architect, last week or this evening? Do any members of the public have any comments about the information Mr. Elkins, the architect, presented last week or this evening? Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Skolnick, you're up.
We're going to call Kevin Craig, our public safety expert. We could have him sworn, please.
Yes.
And Mr. Craig, would you please state your name, spell your last name and give your business address?
Yes, Kevin Craig, C R A I G. Porzio Compliance Services, 100 South Gate Parkway, Morristown, New Jersey.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Craig, before we, I dare you, I just want to get this on the record. There are, and Mr. Skolnick alluded to this last meeting. From our previous applications, there are portions of security that the board and the public should not know about. So I want you to craft all information you give us in broad brushstrokes, but things how it works internally are that that would have been discussed with the police chief and or his designee should be should be left there only. Does that make sense, Mr. Mr. Craig?
Understood, yes, Chairman, it does.
Okay, good. Mr. Skolnick, would you ID him, please?
Okay, Mr. Craig, can you provide your your qualifications as a public safety expert for the board, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to to speak with you tonight. My name is Kevin Craig. I'm Assistant Vice President with Porzio Compliance Services. It's a consulting firm out of Morristown. My focus is safety and security and investigations. Prior to my employment with Porzio Compliance Services, I have worked as a Director of Safety and Security and 25 years plus in law enforcement. The last seven of those years were as a Chief of Police in Jefferson Township in Morris County. I'm a board certified protection professional through ASIS International. I've been recognized as a subject matter expert in law enforcement management and and school safety and security. I have over 30 years of experience in public safety, emergency management and security. I'm a licensed private detective, certified public manager. I'm also a certified security officer instructor through the New Jersey State Police, New Jersey Police Training Commission Certified Instructor. I have a master's degree in administrative science with a specialization in security administration through Fairleigh Dickinson University. Certified instructor in active shooter response, de-escalation, threat assessment. And I also serve as an adjunct professor for Fairleigh Dickinson University in emergency management, threat assessment, and crisis communication.
Okay, I understand.
There's one question I'm going to ask, which didn't seem to get in there, and and I applaud you for all your accolades. Have you had experience or is the some type of certification in the evaluation for security of cannabis sites?
I do not have any specific cannabis site related experience.
But you 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 have reviewed the state standards and you will make sure that we are that this business is in compliance?
I have reviewed the state standards. My my colleague at Porzio Compliance Services, Ada Sanchez, actually wrote the wrote the security plan for for Dogwood Green. I have reviewed it. I reviewed the the notes and email from Chief Abbott in that the board has been provided with indicating that the plan meets or exceeds the standards, but I do have knowledge of the specific security plan as well.
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept him as the security expert for this site. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Skolnick.
I cut you off, Chairman.
No, it's okay. Go right ahead.
Okay, you were asking if any board members had issues and I.
Yes, seeing seeing none, we accept him as an expert in security planning for this site.
Okay, Mr. Craig, we have an ordinance provision from West Orange that the security plan be presented to the police chief or his designee for review, and did that happen in this case?
That did happen, yes, and that that was memorialized by an email by Chief Abbott on March 27th to the board that I believe you may have been provided as an exhibit. That in in that email, the Chief Chief Abbott reviewed and evaluated the security plan and confirmed that the plan was acceptable and did meet or exceed the minimum requirements.
Okay, and I think we had clarification, counselor. I don't know if we need to remark it, but I there was a a record that it had been submitted into the file in this case, so hopefully it's there.
I remember seeing it. Let's see here.
It's a March 27, 2023 email from Chief Abbott. Let's, if we don't mind, let's mark that as Exhibit A3.
Good, okay. Okay. So I didn't your package, but that that we doesn't hurt.
Okay. And Mr. Craig, could you just talk about surveillance video as a topic area and what we're doing in that regard? We'll we'll cover about four or five of these general areas.
Sure, so so the the plan calls for fire burglar burglar alarm central monitoring systems as well as surveillance video. The client has engaged with A D T, the the company to provide those services on a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week basis. A D T is a trusted security company for over 25 years and has does have experience in providing those services to the cannabis industry. The client has also engaged or plans to engage with a or assign a 24-hour contact in accordance with the requirements. 24-hour contact will be the Director of Security. Once the applicant receives their unnecessary approvals, they plan to recruit for the position of that Director of Security from within the the township of West Orange in hopes that they can acquire the interest of a retired West Orange Police Officer with the with the belief that, you know, who better to have the intimate knowledge of the safety and security needs of the community of West Orange than a former West Orange Police Officer retired in good standing? So that's something that the applicant plans to do moving forward in assigning their Director of Security. The Video Surveillance System platform will store all footage for a minimum of 30 days. The systems will be tested every 30 days and maintained for all surveillance and security technology would be performed, including cleaning of surveillance cameras and the maintenance of the security alarm system. Any cash used for cannabis products will be placed into the double lock container.
Okay, so we're switching, we're switching slightly from surveillance video to storage of products.
I'm sorry.
Okay. If you could go on.
Sure, so the the you you wanted to go on with the storage of the product?
Yeah, anything else on the video video system? We had touched on.
That's all I have. That's all I have for the video system at this point.
Okay. Okay, let's talk briefly about the payment and the and the cash.
So so I again, I I think it's noteworthy to mention that what's already been mentioned in in previous testimony, that this facility prior to it's the the current application was was a bank, so there's there there's there's few, very few commercial buildings that have the the better security infrastructure than than a bank, and most noteworthy in this case is the is the vault that still exists that will be used for the storage of both the cash acquired through transactions as well as the storage of the product that that's in question here for this for this particular applicant.
Okay, and the the cannabis products, is there a system in place that is going to meet the state standards for that?
Yes, the company will secure stored finished usable cannabis and cannabis products ready for sale in the locked area in the vault, which will be surveilled at all times with limited access to authorized persons only. Authorized persons would be that Director of Security and management personnel. That's consistent with the regulations.
Okay, and we talked when we had the hearing a couple of weeks ago that the security review is not just at the local level, the state cannabis commission also looks at security issues, obviously.
Yeah, that's correct, and Chief Abbott also noted that in his email in in speaking with with the client and with Ms. Sanchez, who who prepared the security plan for the client. It's my understanding that that approval can only be made after the after this board approves the 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 conditional use.
Okay, and two weeks ago, we had discussions about security and and how customers check in and their IDs. Can you just go over that briefly to confirm that underage users will not be able to get in and will not be able to purchase product?
Sure, so you heard in the in the operations portion that there'll be a two-level verification. One, just to enter the facility, and another second verification at the time of purchase. There there may, if you have any additional questions about that, specifically the process, that I would refer that back to Ms. Grado in operations. But certainly, there has been a contract security firm identified also in the security plan or potential contract security firm. That firm that's mentioned in the security plan is a licensed security agency, meaning that every security guard that they employ has to undergo state certifications or training to be able to be employed through that security agency. So multiple layers of of checks and balances when it comes to identification. There's also, the SOAR training also includes a component within that training to identify false identification and to be able to 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 vet out any identification that would be provided for a requirement such as the one that the applicant is 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 required to perform. So no one under the age of 21 will even be allowed to enter this establishment.
Okay, there's alarm systems and backup systems as well, I take it. Can you just briefly touch on that?
Yes, there are burglar alarm systems, intrusion alarm systems. There's also eight panic buttons strategically placed throughout the the retail store for employees to access in emergency situations. Those will all be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's also a redundancy provision within the security plan that if for any reason the system becomes mechanically is not operational, or there's a power failure, that there is there is a a plan in in place to shut down the facility at that point until the proper security measures can be can be put put back in place. And and the product can be moved into to a place that's suitable under the the CRC regulations.
Okay, so if there's a power outage, there's plans and procedures in place for that to make sure that the the security systems respond appropriately, let's say. Okay, and is there going to be a system in place for monitoring the parking lot to make sure that no illicit activity, certainly no use of cannabis take place? How's that going to work?
So in addition to the video surveillance that covers the entire interior and exterior of the facility, Ms. Grado has also mentioned during her testimony that there will be parking lot attendants to not only monitor the traffic in the parking lot, but also activity in the parking lot. So if there's any any activity that that's not consistent with with what the with appropriate conduct on the property such as use you know, in in vehicles or outside the facility, those things will be reported immediately to the security staff, security director, and to law enforcement to address those issues immediately.
Okay, and I'm just reminded with a little note that one way that we ensure that the security system stays in places is we have the backup generator proposed here, so that could provide some assistance if there's a power outage.
Correct, yes.
Okay, Chairman, that really concludes our our testimony. Obviously, we've we've met with the chief. There's going to be a lot more discussions and coordination that has to take place. We have additional layers of review at the state Cannabis Regulatory Commission, but we hope that this presentation and the plans and the meetings with the chief give the board the comfort that it's it's watching after the community. We know that in a new use like this, security is a major concern, and and we hopefully have given you the confidence that we have it covered.
I have one question for Mr. Craig. When the supplies are delivered, is it during normal business hours before or after business hours? And what security is there when it's delivered? How does it get inside the store without other members, other people seeing it?
So I I I think I could probably should probably defer that question to operations, but there is something, there is mentioned in the security plan that once the at at any time, I don't know the times of delivery, but the deliveries will be escorted by the security staff that are that are present, and the deliveries will be will be done on on camera and and certainly recorded. And proper security will be will be made to ensure that the inventory, the, you know, product is inventoried and placed in the vault, but if there's any as far as the times of day and and who specifically would be involved, I would defer to Ms. Grado for that on operations.
So I think you answered it well enough. Thank you. That's good. Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Craig about his testimony? Do any members?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Mr. Guarino, start, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig, at the end of the business day, will all the cannabis products be taken out of their display cases and stored in a secure area, or are they left on the retail floor?
That I that I would defer to Ms. Grado as well in operations.
Hey, Ms. Grado, are you are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, and you understand you're still under oath from two weeks ago?
I do.
Okay, and the question is, does the cannabis itself get placed into vaults when business closes at night?
Yes, it does. The regulations require that you take all cannabis product and secure it at the vault at the end of the night. On the sales floor, there's no live product at all, so everything is housed in the vault and dispensed from there, so there's no live product on the sales floor anywhere.
Thank you very much, man. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. You said the video was kept for 30 days. Is it destroyed after that, or is it stored somewhere?
That that's the requirement that it's that it's retained. I I that's the that's the minimum requirement. It's my understanding that it's cloud-based storage through through A D T, so that would be something that they would they they would be able to contract for, but it's my understanding that the retention period, once once that 30-day period expires, I do not believe that the video was available beyond that 30 days.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any questions about security for Mr. Craig?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smiraldo.
Mr. Craig, just real quick, I think in the last testimony, last time, our last meeting you were here, they they mentioned that there's going to be approximately seven employees in at the height of their working hours operation, and the occupancy is about 20. I think total for the whole building. What's the control mechanism to make sure that we have, we don't have an overcrowded situation? How do you how do you do that? Because I know you say you're going to be checking the IDs and things of that nature.
I think the control mechanism is is that is that that choke point at the main entrance where you have security officers be checking those IDs, and they'll only be able to allow as many people in the building as the occupancy allowed, so they'll be consistent with the with the fire codes and occupancy of the building. The the remaining will be staged outside, as was described by Ms. Grado in operations, and there'll be parking attendants, parking lot attendants outside to manage that to make sure that that's, you know, that's done efficiently and effectively without creating any safety hazards to either the people that are waiting or security risk for for the facility itself.
Yeah, and there's, I believe there's two exits, but there. Yeah, and there's, I believe there's two exits, but they're going, one, one control point to let in, but people can go out either side, right? The inner exit egress, both the front and rear of the building, correct?
I believe the egress is only for the front except for a handicap access in, in the rear. So the, so the, the, there's, there would be emergency egress. I would imagine would be for either side if there was some type of emergency. Emergency egress would be available, but for, for business purposes, the, the, the main entrance will be for for the clients to, to enter the, the facility and be vetted, except for the rear of the building, which will be for handicap access.
Okay, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Do any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Craig? Do any other, Vice Chairman Wilks?
Yes, as far as the cameras, how far of a distance do they care? Will they be able to see is coming up that street?
Coming up, coming up which street?
Central, I believe it is.
I, I don't know that the cameras are, are, I don't have, I don't have specific information that I can reveal about the camera views. Because that's, that, that's a more granular part of the, of the security plan. But our primary focus is for the property itself and, and the building. So, so the, the building and the property itself will, will have complete 360-degree coverage. That will be, that will be viewable, not only by the security staff on site, but also available to the police department in an emergency. And also as required by the regulations to the cannabis regulatory commission.
Okay, is, just as a, I mean, for, as a, for instance, with this, with the, with you guys having a vault, you know, by, by being a former bank, will it be a panic button? I'm, I'm assuming the panic button will be inside the vault as well. I mean, as far as the eight places that you're looking to put it at?
So again, I don't want to, I don't want to reveal any granular details about where certain mechanisms are, are located. Because that's potentially could compromise the security of the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other members of the board have any questions for security, Mr. Craig?
The client has a question.
Mr. Klein.
As far as the, the video camera coverage, is there, are there cutoffs so that the camera coverage doesn't cover into other people's property? I don't know if I'm saying it right. You have 360 degrees around the building, but do you cut it off so you can't see into the backyard of the neighbor behind you and the side yard of the people next to you?
Well, the, the camera views again are focused on, on the, the applicant's property, not on, but you know, by, by virtue of the, the, the positioning of cameras, they may capture, they may capture images of surrounding areas. But the images would not be anything that's not otherwise in, in, in public view.
Okay.
Can we agree that there'll be no overnight parking in the parking lot?
All right, Danielle, I think we had confirmed that in the testimony.
Great. Can we also confirm that the police have free access to the parking lot if they, if they feel that they have to go around to look at the outside of the building?
Don't, don't they have access to, you know, if they, the police need to get there, we have to get to them?
Is a gate there?
Wow.
Mock Fox or something?
Uh, sure.
Okay, you'll have to work that out.
An issue.
You have to work that out with the police department. So one question that I'm thinking of, let's say there's an incident. I, I know you, you save the backup for 30 days. If there is an incident, can we say that the backup will be saved for one year? And/or at the request of whatever authority that is investigating, it will be kept in perpetuity till the authority says you can release it?
Yeah, so if, so if there's, if there's an incident that's reported, the, the, the footage can be preserved. So, so if you, if you make, if you, if there's a particular incident that's being investigated within that 30 days, that, that particular footage of that video can be preserved in perpetuity. So once it's preserved, you have it, you have it forever. That wouldn't be among the, 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 the informa, the, the the video surveillance footage that's, that's, that's discarded is that, that's not, not anything that has to do with any ongoing incident or investigation.
Is it, is it automatic that's saved in perpetuity or some, one of the people there has to do this?
So someone, so someone would have to make a request to the, to this, to the surveillance video provider to preserve that video. Once it's, once it's preserved, they would, they would have access to it.
Oh, so, so the, the person who, we don't need the name of the person, but the position of the person should be available to the police department. So let, let's say it's a coordinator. Whoever holds that position of coordinator is the person the police department would contact immediately and say, please preserve that piece of information. So, so we, we sort of have a chain of custody. Does that make sense?
Okay, that does make sense.
Okay. I like to make sense. Mr. Skolnick doesn't think I do, but I liked it.
I did not say that. I may, I may have had a backhand comment about some of those jokes, but I did not.
I appreciate that.
I did not offer any implicit nor explicit.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Do any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Craig about his security testimony this evening? Seeing none. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Craig about his security testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Craig about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet.
Seeing none. We'll close that portion of the meeting.
Wait, I'm sorry, Chairman. We do have. Brown?
Yes, go right ahead.
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fazare Brown. I'm at 36 Joy Street, right behind the building. There's a question.
Yes, Mr. Brown, go right ahead, sir.
So my question is, as far as I, again, as far as the security cameras and privacy issues. Because, um, you see, you know, say, say, they say, it looks like it's a, if there's any cameras installed, they would probably be able to see a good way into the backyards of, of mine and also the adjacent, this, this backyards that are near me. This is, is there, is there any way that we can guarantee that, you know, that our privacy is not going to be, you know, exclusive across upon?
Mr. Craig?
Sure, I, I, I mentioned that, I mentioned that a little bit earlier. The security cameras are mounted on, on the building, so they have views. The intended view is of the, of the, of the business property and parking lot and not the surrounding area. That said, if there, if there's any, if there's any view that comes from that, that's captured on those cameras, that view would be only, only what's available to the public anyway, based on where they're, where they're, those cameras are specifically located. So if there's any specific concern that you have, I would recommend that once the director of security is appointed, that, that's, that's something that can be possibly discussed with the director of security to make sure that the camera views that are in place are not, are not overreaching to the point where anyone's privacy is, is impacted.
Ms. McGovern, I think we should make that a condition of approval. So this way it's going to be on, on the applicant to ensure that as opposed to the public going to see the director. This way it's going to save time and make it more efficient.
Okay, so how are we going to phrase that so that can be enforced? The applicant must supply contact information?
Reasonable, reasonable method, methods to keep the the security cameras on the lot, it's on the area itself as opposed to the contiguous lots of homeowners. Is that, Mr. Skolnick?
That sounds reasonable. I, I trust that Ms. McGovern will give us the draft of the resolution and we'll have a chance to review that. Maybe we'll get Chief Abbott involved in that. He's, he's been kind enough to help us out and he can perform some sort of review on that because that's sort of an operational thing. The cameras will have to go up. They'll have to be tilted. I don't know if the cameras have light shields like you've heard on many occasion. We'll have to figure that out. We understand the concern and certainly prepare to address that.
I'm wondering if your security people or the way a video can be run, if it, it can automatically blur something out onto private property, you know, how you can do on Zoom. I think you're doing it right now, Mr. Skolnick. Where your background is blurred. I don't know whether that's available or even possible. Once you get past the perimeter to somebody's private backyard. I don't think you want it necessarily on a street and, and the chief police may say, no, that's not what we want anyway, but I don't know. It's, it, I guess you can look into it.
We're going to work.
We understand the concern. I think there was a one of the board members mentioned might be beneficial to have a couple of feet on the street. But we understand Mr. Brown's concern about having videotape of everything that goes on in his backyard and in his neighbor's backyard. So I, I think that, that can be addressed. It's a little granular, but we, we'll go back and we'll give you the information and so that hopefully
Thank you.
we could get a reasonable, a condition of approval so that the board and the community have the confidence for Ms. McGovern, for, for Zoom purposes, when you take the advanced class, you, you learn how to click on the different things to blur and unblur the background.
God, and I thought it was my glasses. Thank goodness.
You must, you're much better, you're much more technical than I am.
Very high tech.
Okay. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Craig, the security expert, about his testimony? Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Craig about his testimony, the security expert?
Not seeing any.
Seeing none. Close this portion of the meeting. Do any members of the public have any comments about his testimony? When any member of the, raise your hand and please be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments about his testimony? Raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Close this portion of the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Skolnick, it's the time to sum up.
Chairman, no real need for that. We appreciate your time. We appreciate the special hearing. As I mentioned in my opening, the relief is relatively narrow tonight. Conditional use approval. We've confirmed that we meet all the conditional use standards. Minor site plan approval with just the one lot coverage variance of about 112 square feet for the generator pad and the trash enclosure. And then the signage package, which we believe to be reasonable under the circumstances. Realizing that where the ordinance was designed for an industrial zone. The governing body put a layer to allow a retail-type facility. The signage ordinance has not been updated. Given all that, essentially, we're replacing two for two. And we have that one identification sign on the left side of the building. So it's, it's three, but two are pre-existing in some fashion. So we think the relief that we're seeking is quite narrow. Hopefully, we've addressed all the issues that the board has and we certainly believe we're, the board has sufficient evidence before to approve this application.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments before we get further along? Vice Chairman Wilks?
No, no questions.
Mayor McCartney?
No questions.
Council President Tommy Williams?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but I do want to thank the applicant for their consideration and removal of the concerns that this body indicated at the last meeting. We appreciate and welcome this new business and industry into West Orange. Thank you so much for all that you are bringing to this community. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Albert?
No questions.
Mr. Guarino?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein?
No questions.
Mr. Smeraldo?
No questions.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen? We'll come back to Mr. Jensen. Ms. Keller?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Okay, so we'll say.
Bag off, may I just?
Yes, Ms. McGovern.
At the, the last application we had for cannabis retailer, the board imposed a condition that stated, should the zoning official determine that refuse and recycling produced on the site is excessive, then the zoning official shall mandate that the applicant retain and use a private rest refuse and/or recycling Carter. I don't know whether you want to impose the same condition on this application.
Yes. Because they say it's going to be minimal, so I don't think that'll be difficult to accommodate.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Skolnick, Ms. Grado?
One, someone stupid question about the garbage.
Mr. Klein.
I, I know there's no cannabis in the garbage. They're going to put the garbage out at the curb. Do people? I mean, are we worried that they're going to go digging through the trash? Does it, I mean, should it just be a private hauler?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Good.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just Mr. Klein, to kind of alleviate your concerns. Just wanted to make you aware that the council is considering a new garbage or recycling waste management application or, or company as the current contract expires. And so as we indicated, right now, private businesses are included in our municipal pickup. That may change effective September of this year or even at the beginning of next year. So individual businesses may be required to secure individual and private hauling as we are trying to make sure we protect all our businesses and residents and, and provide the best services that we can. But certainly that is something that the administration is considering and the council will have to take into consideration as we continue to move forward with waste management.
Okay, thank you. Until, until, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, just the concern was that somebody's going to think there might be something in there that there's not. Go through their garbage and rip it open and leave it on the street. That's all.
And, and to that end, we'll make a condition that if the zoning official finds that that is the case on a routine basis, then the zoning official will contact the applicant and ask for a private Carter to be engaged.
And Chairman, also, there will be cam, yes, there will be cameras also. So if
Yes.
It can be, anyone can follow up on that.
Okay. Okay, having said that, based on the testimony of Mr. Elkins, Ms. Grado and Mr. Craig and the summation of Mr. Skolnick, the signs in and of themselves, as brought out, the, the ordinance is not, has not zoomed ahead with the industrial zone and we do have now businesses entering the industrial zone, which different than we've had before. The sign that they're seeking a variance for, I agree, is a wayfaring sign. The applicant has been very cooperative and understanding of the public's desires to have certain things and not have other things. We appreciate that greatly. The signs will be backlit. They will follow the town ordinance. The request for the variance for generator pad and trash enclosures makes sense for safety and cleanliness reasons. So to that, it is, it actually is in compliance with all state ordinances. They have worked closely with the police chief and/or his designee. And we appreciate all the time that they have put into bringing this application to us. To that end, I recommend we approve PB 23-02 Dogwood Green LLC, 5 Central Avenue Block 10, Lot 1.01 Zone I, with the conditions that Ms. McGovern will go over shortly.
Ready for my conditions or your conditions?
Go for it.
Okay. The applicant shall submit a certification or other written confirmation that the chief of police or his designee has approved the proper security system, which is, they've already done, and that the plan is available to the chief or his designee upon demand. Exterior lighting shall match state and township requirements. The parking lot pavement will be repaved and restriped to clearly show ADA parking and individual parking. The handicap slash ADA required parking spaces, one of which must be then accessible and must have signage providing identification of the ADA parking spaces and limiting their use to those demonstrating the appropriate license for use of such parking. Lighting plans pertaining to security, including those required by the state, shall be provided on the plans. The parking lot shall be off limits to overnight parking of vehicles after hours and the applicant consents to the police patrolling the parking lot to enforce the prohibition of after-hours parking. The building windows will be opaque as per the state requirement. The applicant agrees to clean up and maintain the landscaping on site and will submit a written landscape plan showing use of native vegetation. And we'll, we'll work with the engineer with respect to that. Should the zoning official determine that refuse and recycling produced on the site is excessive, then the zoning official shall mandate that the applicant retain and use a private refuse. shall mandate that the applicant retain and use a private refuse and or recycling Carter. And also, if the zoning official finds that there is routine disruption of garbage, the zoning or the code official may also require private haulers for garbage. And recycling, the roof will be resealed as a white roof. The name of the video coordinator shall be supplied to the police for contact if necessary to preserve video. The applicant will install a new ramp in the northwest corner as per the report of John Hess Township Engineer dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Applicant will, I don't think I have the right date on that one. Applicant will comply with the requirements set forth in the review letter prepared by John Hess dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and Paul Greigle Township Planner dated March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. The signs may be lighted during the evening operating hours not to exceed the time period by ordinance of ten PM to seven AM. The sign on the plans above the door was an arrow and will be removed from the plan. Applicant withdraws any plans to use the drive-through window at this time and the drive-through windows will be designed in such a way to make clear to the public that they are not in use, and any signs that might be necessary to convey this will be approved by the planning department. The signs on the building will be as per A two introduced at the hearing on tonight's date. Applicant and finally applicant must make an effort to limit the surveillance cam- camera view to the property itself and not adjacent lots.
And I want to add one more. The the variance that I would recommend we grant is a C two variance. The purposes of the municipal land use law will be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance. Requirements and benefits of the deviation would be which substantially outweigh any detriment according to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy small c parentheses, two close parentheses.
Chairman, if we could just have Mr. Elkins address the repaving and restoration. I think there was a slight modification. I just wanted to make sure we have the language correct. Again, that's a cost item. We're going to clean up the parking lot, but I think there's a term of art that he had proposed.
We're coding it, yeah.
Okay, so it's not repaving, it's going to be?
Exactly. It's just a resealing the
Resealing? Okay, let me find that to make sure.
It was number three, perhaps, although I was writing quickly.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may add
Council President Williams?
Thank you. I thought we indicated that as far as the drive-through windows are concerned, we were not going to mandate opaque. We were going to leave it to the discretion because they may want it to do something different. If I'm an error, certainly, please correct me.
That opaque opaque means that you can't see through it, not that it means one color. It's not just you can't see through it.
The the state statute requires that any windows into a cannabis retail must be opaque. So that's a state requirement. As for the drive-through windows, I I will make sure that the condition read a little bit better than what I was doing on the fly here to show that, to make sure that the public understands it's not in use.
Right. They they could put a picture of a scenery in there, which is also opaque. It doesn't have to be monochromatic. The it's council president, is that okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Skolnick, is that okay?
Yes.
Good.
We're good.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smeraldo, seconds. Ms. McGovern, are we okay?
We're good.
Okay, Yamalat on the motion.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen?
We'll come back to Mr. Jensen.
Council, Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes. Good luck, Danielle.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagos?
Yes, Mr. Jensen?
I don't
One more try.
He is still on the screen. I'm not sure why he's still muted.
Can't hear us, so we're not going to count his vote for this. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Grado. Thank you, Mr. Skolnick, for wonderful application and working with the planning board. We wish you the best of luck.
We appreciate that. Do we have a target date for the resolution by any chance? So I can mark it.
Well, we have a meeting next week. I'll try to get it done.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Okay, you two guys work together, so we come up with the the right wording.
We appreciate that.
Thank you all very much. Don't go away. My my guys, don't go away. There's more to come.
Okay.
Danielle, do you have to go to the state next?
We do. Yeah, so we take this approval, and that is the last piece that we can now turn around and submit for final state approval. So I thank the board so much for the time and the support and really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. We're all done, right, Chairman?
Yes, yes, you guys are done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty PM. And motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Uh, Council President Williams motions, and who got the second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Guarino, seconds on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
The eyes are above the nose. Have a wonderful evening to everybody. Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.